Go ahead and call this meeting to order. Mr. President, Speaker Allo, if you would mind reading the open public meeting act statement.
This meeting is called pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Law. This meeting of October 16th, 2018 was included in a notice sent to newspapers of record and posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building and has been continuously posted as the required notices under the statute. In addition, copy of this notice has been available to the public and is filed with the Office of the Municipal Department.
You can stand for the invitation.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council President Volker?
Here.
Council Vice President Deeter Alma?
Here.
Council David?
Here.
Council Lewis?
Here.
Council McFay?
Here.
Okay, we do have a few announcements. The Fall Festival is on October 27th, 2018, from 2:00 to 6:00 p.m. The Easton Hills for Halloween Parade is October 28th, 2018, and starts at 3:00 p.m. And Trick or Treat is October 31st, 2018, and will be from 5:00 to 8:00. There is a missed break on the agenda. That's okay. We can move forward to the, uh... Oh, one more announcement. Councilman McGee.
My apologies, sir. Uh, earlier this week, I was with our DPW out during the recyclable cleanups. Uh, the hardest work in DPW, not only in Warren County, but I believe all of the state of New Jersey. I have a lot of respect for those folks that do that every single day. So, one of the things was discussed was a young man had come up to me, an employee, and mentioned about, you know, it's just frankly, if there's any way during the meeting you could announce to help us out with the recyclables, because it's actually slowing down the process, and as we get into the colder weather and stuff, we don't want these employees out there harboring and laboring any more than they have to. So, I'm only here to deliver a message of this. If there's any questions regarding what is to be in the blue recyclable cans, and thank you all for recycling, he wanted to get that point across first and foremost. Uh, what we want to do is really get the message out there, and maybe through our town website and stuff, we can even promote this a little bit more, but obviously, we are a sound board. We can do this. So, uh, with that, a lot of people are taking like all the recyclables, throwing them in a plastic bag, a Walmart bag, or any kind of bag, and throwing them into recyclables, but that's not working. So, you have to pick the bags out, laborsome, cumbersome, take these bags out, sift through them, and throw them in the garbage shovel. I would recommend, without me being the subject matter expert on this, if you would call extension 314, that is Mr. Patty Huxton at the, uh, at City Hall, that's extension 314. And if you have any questions regarding recyclables, let's help our DPW, let's make your job a lot easier, especially in the inclement weather that's coming. I know for one, you know, let's just get the plastics and then things out there, things got to be separated. Uh, even sometimes I have questions. I just try to separate the best I can. 314, give her a shout, and let's really help these, uh, our workers out. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Congressman. Thank you, Councilman.
I apologize, we didn't have the invitations evening, but, uh, I hope we could have a moment of silence for a long time. Hillsborough area Historical Society member Ann Miller, who passed away earlier this week.
Absolutely.
And since we didn't have her in the invitation, I hope we could, uh, honor her now.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Lewis, did you have something?
Yeah, I just want to say, it's very simple. Do not throw plastic bags in recyclable. Very simple. No rec... No plastic bags, please. And that will help them out dramatically. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Okay. Moving forward, Peggins, Philson?
The regular bill is for October 16th. The current fund, $1,012,244.94. Sewer utility fund, $12,756.34. Planning board trust fund, $562.50. Section 8, $1,876.96. General trust fund, $336.75. For a regular bill list of $1,027,777.49. Section 8 rent payments, $144,392. The prepaid bill list, current fund, $45. Sewer utility fund, $2,443.6. For a prepaid bill list of $2,488.6. Grand total of all funds, $1,174,657.55.
Motion to adopt the bill list?
Second.
Okay, so any discussion, Councilman Lewis?
No.
Council Vice President?
No.
Councilman Davis?
No discussion.
Councilman McGee?
No, sir.
Then I have nothing. Roll call.
Councilman Lewis?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Council Vice President Deeter Alma?
Yes.
Councilman McFay?
Yes.
Council President Volker?
Yes. Okay, and now we have, uh, an open public hearing, which is a scoping hearing. Attorney Mark Peck from Florio Perucci, Sean Horton Capelli.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. Uh, for the record again, my name is Mark Peck. I'm an attorney with the Florio Perucci Law Firm, here on behalf of Pohakon Solar Farm. Uh, and I would like to, before I get going, thank the council, and Ms. Kleiner, and Stan and Rich, uh, for your help, for your, your support, and for allowing us to be here tonight. Uh, the purpose of the hearing, the reason we're here tonight, is to accept public comment on this proposed major diversion. That's DEP speak, uh, for, for what we're proposing. A major diversion of parkland at Delaware Heights Park, which is Lot 21 in Block 3004. The park was previously improved using Green Acres funds, so whenever you want to do something on property that Green Acres funds were used for, there's a whole process that has to be followed, and this hearing is one of the requirements so that, you know, council and certainly the public, uh, can ask any questions they want, uh, and give any comments, uh, that they want. Public loss so has until the end of this month, October 31st, to provide comments in writing also, uh, but I would note that these have to be sent to Ms. Kleiner, the town clerk, but also to the DEP Green Acres program. Uh, while we're here, we're seeking a subsurface utility easement running along the south and west perimeter of Delaware Heights Park, uh, starting at Carpenter'sville Road and running for approximately 1,400 feet. We're actually looking for two easements. The first would be a permanent 15-foot wide easement totaling 20,669 square feet, or 0.48 of an acre. We're also looking for a temporary 10-foot wide construction easement totaling 13,718 square feet, or 0.319 of an acre. That temporary construction easement would not be needed for long, um, and we'll get into what we're proposing to do with it, but probably a couple of weeks, uh, maybe a little longer if you wait for the grass to grow back. Um, we're proposing again to run a subsurface utility line, which will be buried at a approximate depth of three to four feet. Uh, the property would be restored after construction, and it should have no impact on the use of the park. Uh, the utility line will meet all state and, and federal codes relating to this. It's a heavily regulated utility, and it's actually pretty interesting, the way they, they do these subsurface, uh, utility lines, is the line will be run through a conduit with a PVC pipe, and then it will actually be encased in concrete under, under the ground. And then there's, uh, warning tape, uh, placed above it, so if anybody happens to be digging there, you know, they'll, they'll see that. Uh, the purpose, uh, of this diversion is to allow for the interconnection of an approved 10-megawatt solar facility, uh, across the street, across Carpenter'sville Road, uh, Lot 4 and Block 93 in Pohakon. And the idea is to interconnect this solar field with the electrical substation here in Phillipsburg, on lots 42 and 43 and Block 2505. This project will serve a compelling public need and will yield a significant public benefit. Solar facilities are considered inherently beneficial uses, which means that it is universally considered of value to the community because it fundamentally serves the public good. Other examples of inherently beneficial uses are hospitals, schools, and childcare facilities. This requested subsurface utility easement will allow the solar facility to interconnect with the energy grid and will provide, again, up to 10 megawatts of clean renewable entry, uh, energy, which is, in a very conservative estimate, sufficient to power 1,640 homes. This project is also consistent with the state's Energy Master Plan, and it's estimated that over the assumed 20-year lifespan of the solar facility, there will be a net reduction of 115,686 tons of carbon dioxide. As compensation for this, uh, proposed easement, as I discussed last week, um, Green Acres, whenever, even though we're just asking for an easement to bury a line, and we're not taking or otherwise disposing of the property, Green Acres requires that we give land in compensation. Uh, so we have a four and a quarter, approximately four and a quarter acre parcel of land right across Carpenter'sville Road for the park. That's in Pohakon. Uh, we'll restrict that for open space and recreation use. The town can leave it vacant, can, you know, use it, uh, as a complement to the park or, or do whatever. That's a DEP requirement. For the town, we're offering, uh, $40,000, uh, which you can dedicate and use for, for park improvements. And then the final thing is, uh, you have an outstanding Green Acres position, uh, where some property was improperly disposed of and compensation wasn't given, and in fact, those years and years back. Um, but until this situation is resolved, the town can avail itself of Green Acres funding. So, you're losing out on some significant, uh, revenue possibilities to help preserve parks, playgrounds, open space. Uh, in 2012, uh, this compensation was estimated at $60,000, so we'll fund that up to $75,000, which again, will allow the town to then seek, uh, future Green Acres funding. With me tonight are the project manager, Rick Roseberry. He can give you a little more detail, uh, of the proposed solar line, uh, as it runs from the proposed solar facility to the substation, with particular emphasis, of course, on the park. And then if you have any questions about environmental impacts, we have Ray Walker, who's an environmental engineer, and for people, uh, questions relating to electricity, uh, itself, uh, we have Jennifer Derrin. Uh, and they're all with Mazer Consulting in various offices. Uh, so I'll now turn it over to Rick to walk you through, uh, what we're planning here, and also to explain some of the alternatives that we've considered, and why really this plan is the only viable plan to connect this. And then again, once Rick's done, uh, we're happy to stay here as long as you want to answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Evening, everyone. Uh, as Mark mentioned, my name is Rick Roseberry. I'm the principal of Mazer Consulting. Um, I provided each of the council members with copies of the exhibits that I have on display boards here. Uh, the purpose of this meeting is really to solicit, uh, feedback, uh, from the residents and the public, so I've angled it a little bit so that everyone in the audience can see it. If any council members have any questions, or have a problem seeing it, just let me know. The first exhibit I have here is an aerial image of the property. Uh, the park is located in the lower portion of the property. We have that highlighted in bold. Uh, this is the Delaware Heights Ballpark. The easement for the electric line that we are discussing is in yellow. This follows the southerly portion of the ballpark. Uh, just so everybody, orientation-wise, the solar facility is located in Pohakon. On the east side of this plan, the intent is to run electric from the solar facility to the south, up Carpenter'sville Road, across the ballpark, down to the, we have the Black River Western Railroad, uh, where we've already secured permission, uh, to run the electric line over to the substation. Uh, the timing point is over by the Board of Ed, near South Main, and I think that's Limecombe Road. So, that's the route. The, so the whole purpose of this project is to get the electricity from the solar field over to where the Board of Ed property is located. There's two things that we have to satisfy. First is the alternatives. I mentioned, how do we get it there? Uh, we looked at many, actually, we looked at every possible route possible. Uh, I'm gonna highlight the three, uh, that were, we had considered at first somewhat viable, that needed more research. Uh, the first alternative is obviously the route that we're proposing. Uh, this requires some tiny easements from some private property owners, and also from, uh, the, uh, the Green Acres diversion process, and this is the route that we're pursuing at this time. Uh, the very first route that we looked at was utilizing the Norfolk Southern rail line, which is adjacent to the facility, and as you can see, goes in an east-west direction. Ultimately, we would have been able to pick it up on South Main Street, follow South Main to make the air connect. Uh, Norfolk Southern ruled that out and denied that request, predominantly because the bridge that is located by South Main, uh, could not support the electrical lines on them, and they did not want the additional, um, utilities within the public right of way, their right of way. So, that was deemed to be not a viable alternative. The next option we looked at was utilizing some private property, and it was actually to the south of the ballpark. Uh, the property is owned by Mr. Krunch, and, um, we looked at that piece of property to see if that was viable. Uh, if we were able to have an easement across that property, we could then, uh, talk to the Toll Bridge Commission about utilizing the High 78 right of way to get to the railroad. Uh, and as we started getting into the history of his property, we found out that there's a deed restriction that goes back a long ways that restricts it for agricultural uses. Once again, rules that, rules that property and that route out as a viable alternative. So, those are the three alternatives, the one we're proposing, uh, the one using a Conrail line, and the one using other private property. Uh, the only one that is viable at this time is the route that's through the ballpark. And then the second item that we've marked, touched on, is, I guess, that's our Green Acres, is the compensation. Uh, I've highlighted on this plan, the, uh, what is 4.7 acre piece of property, that is, uh, intended to be used as compensation dedicated to the town. Uh, it's directly across from the ballpark. Uh, you can use it for whatever you wish, uh, but it would be, uh, under the same restrictions as the Green Acres.
Do you want to just go to the other side? Just to give the public a better view of, of the park?
So, the second exhibit I provided is a blow-up of the park property itself, and this exhibit is rotated, different from the other exhibit. So, north is on the left side, we have Route 78 on the south. This follows the town line. Pohakon is to the south, uh, Hillsborough is to the north. Uh, the intent is to come off Carpenter'sville Road, and we're hugging the tree line along the southern border of the property. Uh, it goes adjacent to the soccer fields, atillate, uh, reaches the Route 78 right of way, where we will follow the right of way and the fence line past the tableport, uh, at, uh, the, uh, the land that's owned by the railroad. So, the intent was to keep it as far away from any of the public facilities, uh, keep it as close to the property line as possible, and this route is relatively open and unobstructed, and, uh, as Mark mentioned, it's an underground line that, once they install it and backfill it and see it, uh, you won't even know it's there.
Okay, and that, uh, at least concludes the formal part of our presentation. Raise your right hand. Rick, you swear that the testimony that you just gave was the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
Very good, thank you. So, now, you know, again, that concludes, to the extent we have a formal presentation, but again, any, any questions that people have, um, we're here to answer.
Sure, I'd also like to, if we can, Stan Shrek, our town engineer, is in the audience as well. Stan, would you like to provide your opinion with regard to the program?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity. I don't have to do that. You have to do it afterwards. Uh, I, I have to thank, um, the team for working with us for pretty close to probably a year now, discussing with this, how to do this, and how to provide a, a needed green energy program close to where we are. I fully support this. A little history too, you did mention the diversion that the town had, it's a very old diversion. Uh, it was when Besseger School was, uh, needed over to the town, there were, well, the property that was Green Acres now has 10 lots on it, and, uh, that wasn't properly disposed of. So, uh, Green Acres finally caught up to the town, probably back in around 2010, when we built, uh, we built this concession stand. We did that under a Green Acres grant, and then we were asking for the final disbursement of the grant, which was, I think, was around $70,000, was the final bill. They said, "Well, no, you can't have that because of this diversion." So, we went through the whole process of diversion. We actually had a scoping hearing like this. We were, uh, providing property that was adjacent, and, uh, we had the scoping hearing. It was just before Christmas when Michelle, when he came to the scoping hearing, it was like two days before Christmas. And, um, we settled on that, but then the, the Green Acres came back asking for compensation, which was up around $60,000 at the time. So, appreciate, uh, this opportunity to clear up that diversion. So, in addition to the money owed to the state, we also get the reimbursement back, and now we have the opportunity to go forward finally with other Green Acres funding. So, this has a, a positive impact on the town in many aspects, and I can see no downside to it. I fully support it.
Thank you, Stan. At this point in time, uh, we can open it up to the floor. Motion to open the public hearing to the floor.
Senator.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilman Lewis?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Council Vice President Deeter Alma? Councilman McFay?
Yes.
Council President Volker?
Yes. Does any member of the public have any questions regarding this project?
I do. Joe Trench?
Yes.
And the smart man, or... I got a question on the four acres that is in Pohakon. How would that settle up?
Any Green Acres issue in Hillsborough? Are you gonna annex the land or something?
The, uh, the four-plus acres, the part that we're talking about now, that's not to clear up your old, the marriage and that's, that's for here now. Um, it's just gonna be, it is open space. I don't think Green Acres cares like what, what town is. They just wanna see property satisfied and preserved.
All right. The next question is, the four acres is gonna be in Pohakon, are they gonna subsequently tax us if we improve it?
It likely will, yes.
Okay. So, where's the benefit?
Council Vice President?
I'm not trying to give you a hard time, but then do you...
No, no, you're right.
There's questions here.
These were a lot of my questions, that, yeah. I guess we'll get there. Then, or if somebody has the answer, I don't know the answers, they were my questions too.
I, I don't have a ready answer for that, but I'm happy to reach out to the Pohakon tax assessor and find out how they will treat this, you know, assuming it's vacant parkland or, or unimproved property, and I'll, I'll see what the assessor says.
Okay, he's our tax assessor as well, so...
Hopefully, they go well.
It might be. They may be able to work out a deal with each other.
But I'll, we'll definitely get that information.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Mr. Dickie, you can go after Mr. Timman.
Bill Timman, 230 South Main Street. The power, as it's being generated and what have you, there used to be a movie called The Home Line, if you're familiar with that at all, where the high tension lines, you could light a fluorescent bulb. What's the EMF effect on this, being three feet under the ground or four feet, as it may be, to the surrounding area, to the people in the area that have been walking in that area? And we'll go ahead and discuss that first.
Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give in connection with this hearing is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
So, in fact, it's, the EMF for an underground line, this is a 33-kV line, so it's 33,000 volts. Typically, um, what you see in the ground is anywhere from 33 kV up to 69 kV. Um, that's the, the general range. EMF is in fact less underground than it is above grade, so the overhead tension lines that you see are providing more EMF to than what's underground because these are not only a PVC conduit, but also encased in concrete, protected by the soil, and because of their proximity to each other, the three cables to each other, they in fact cancel out EMF. So, what you're getting is probably less than what you get from your microwave in your, in your house.
Does it generate any heat?
No, so it's not. The heat must dissipate because otherwise the, the cables would be impacted. So, the heat is dissipated in the soil.
So, eventually, it can produce heat in the soil?
No, it doesn't. It, it dissipates very quickly. It's not, it, it doesn't build up heat, it dissipates.
The heat in soil accumulates also?
No, it doesn't.
It's like an insulator?
That's, it's one of the reasons for using concrete as well. Concrete dissipates heat much faster than soil itself, so you put it in concrete, the soil probably will not receive any heat.
Okay. Crossing the road, will this be a tunnel, or will this be torn up and then repaired? And if, if so...
The road piles be trenched?
It's generally trenched.
So, you're not gonna pile it, you're driving, uh, line underneath it?
I'm... I can't answer that. Yeah, typical construction for this is, is trench, trenching and doing the same kind of construction.
If you, if you drive, if you, if you tunnel it, you can't encase it in concrete, which is a, a much better construction, so you would rather trench it.
They require to have a broad opening permit from us, it'll be, you're dealing, bonding, and approving whatever's done out there, but that's another step.
And then correct, uh, it's patch fixed?
Yeah, we have to rent, remember, for doing that?
Well, that's why I brought it up, of course.
It'll look good.
Also, because that property is on the other side of the road, and if it is at some point in time designated as a plague area, that means people would be having to cross that road with traffic. What's the property to the south of that? Is that also Pohakon?
That is, that is also Pohakon.
Why can't that be done adjacent to that property, rather than across the road into the cornfield? Or who owns the cornfield?
The cornfield across Carpenter'sville Road, or, or what's just out in the park?
In other words, you're putting that four acres up here?
Yep.
Why not put it over here, or over here? That way it'd be, it would be adjacent to the...
Oh, yeah, no, I, I hear what you're saying, but we...
This property's...
We don't, we don't own, but we don't own that property.
Who owns this property?
Um, I'm not sure who owns it, but we have four and a quarter acres at it. Mark, who technically owns that?
I believe it's township property, and I believe it's regulated.
I think we own it. We own it already, it's Green Acres.
This, this means over here?
Mr. Timman, you're, you're speaking of the, the four-plus acres in Pohakon?
South of, south of the playground.
That's all we own. You're speaking of the four-plus acres in Pohakon that they're proposing to give to the town in exchange for the diversion.
Right, right. So, who owns this property south of the playground? Whoever you own.
I think Phillipsburg owns that property.
We do.
Yes, it's a tree form. They'll be made it a tree form.
Okay. Because it would be a hazardous, theoretically a hazardous condition if it's a playground that is added to across the road, for people having to cross the road.
Uh, that's really more of a, like, planning board issue if the town really decides to do that. I mean, things like, you know, pedestrian access and ingress and exit, that would all be covered by the planning board.
But if you look at it beforehand, not subsequently to it, you know, you won't have to bridge over it, or, or put some stoplights in, or electrified crossing at that point.
Well...
Common sense.
Right. But the purpose of the proposed donation of the four-plus acres in Pohakon is to satisfy DEP's requirement, because you're having a diversion, proposed diversion, through encumbered property. So, the state wants to see something given back in return, so you're taking property that's encumbered, you're running, making improvements to that, what are you, what are you giving back in return to maintain the status quo, so to speak? And that's what the applicants propose to do in Pohakon with the four-plus acres. It does not have to be...
I can see that, but it kinda makes it an issue down the road. Like, building a Warren County library on 519, but you have houses across the street to get to the library, how are you gonna cross the street without taking a possible to get a hit?
Councilman Davis?
I can assure you that before we start making new improvements on this, uh, proposed lot, we have a lot of work to do on our existing recreational facilities, so that, the concern about that lot would be sometime in the far, far future, probably for, maybe my kids to... Just got them, you know, council.
Just being, uh...
No, I understand, and I appreciate it here, here.
Being at the center of his advocate on, on, you know, 30, 40, 50 years down the road, you know, how is that gonna be a benefit? Okay? And to concern, it's not on this agenda, but it was spoken about before the meeting by Councilman Bay and Councilman Lewis. Why are the garbage trucks throwing our recyclables in with the garbage?
Uh, we're only answering questions that have to do with the scoping hearing. We're only answering questions that have to do with the scoping hearing. Thank you, Bill.
Oh.
Mr. Dickey?
One more thing. How is that going to benefit the residents electric wise in the town of Phillipsburg?
It's not, you can't dedicate on the electrical grid, you can't dedicate like power generated at this site that goes here, it all just kind of gets pumped into the grid. But it'll benefit in a more global sense, again, by reducing over its lifespan, over 115,000 tons of carbon dioxide into the atmosphere. It'll benefit by helping the state meet its Energy Master Plan goals, which calls for a large percentage of the state's energy to be provided by renewable energy sources such as solar.
And will it give benefits to Pohakon residents? Because I know when a solar plant was proposed before at the Olingersall site, they could go across one road to provide power for the residents as long as it didn't cross more than one road.
I can't speak to that. I know that this line is proposed to tie it to the substation where it would then be distributed throughout the grid, the PJM grid, right?
Mr. Dickey?
Don Dickey, Reynolds Street, Phillipsburg, I have one simple question. You're crossing a major road, it's a major throughway. How is that going to impact traffic and for how long?
The crossing of Carver'sville Road, it can, you know, a typical crossing like this would probably be achieved without doing a complete road closure. You could do it in single lane closures with typical traffic control. I would estimate this to be a two to three day job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dickey?
I'm assuming that excepting for earthquakes, this is a state of the art, 100 year state of the art technology. Would that be right? And they don't even design for more than that, right, in these times? I just want to be counted as a member of the public who thinks it is wonderful that we are attacking the global warming problem right here locally. And God bless you. Keep it up. And I want to yea hey.
Thank you, Mr. Dickey.
Mr. Case? Rob Case, 33 Tom Street. So what is, I guess my question goes, what is the timing for this? And the reason I'm asking is because I won't say the soccer club's name because I don't represent them specifically. This is our bidding field, that's our senior field. That's half of our program. And this goes, feeds are both used from March to early June, and then again from late August until November. So my question is, what's the timing and what, one, what's the impact of our organization? And two, what should we do to better prepare for this?
So there's a couple of things, obviously, we're going through a process with green acres right now that requires State House approval. I think the earliest we're estimating that that could be achieved is next spring.
Yes.
That's the earliest.
We're hoping to get a March 2019 meeting, but that's not certain.
Right. So assuming that works, and we get approval by the State House for the diversion, the intent is to start immediately thereafter.
How long is the project going to take?
The total project, which includes the installation of the solar panels, is anticipated takes six months. This project on this site can be, honestly, if it took them three weeks, that would be longer.
Okay, so there's a potential of it happening in the middle of summer, or we won't be there?
Oh, definitely.
Okay. And the other question then is, sometimes the Y or instant, they run flight football programs, again, using these two fields. So I guess that's a conversation, I know this is an effective, I guess it's a conversation for them to then figure something else out. But my only concern right now is our organization, so if you do it during the summer, we won't be there.
Yeah, and I, yeah, I believe that, you know, town councils are going to probably do their discussions, make sure that we coordinate all the work with all the appropriate agencies so that we're not shutting down the farm or anything. Certainly that wasn't part of it.
Just to add to that, basically, the conduit runs, they go in those heels, can be placed anytime. So anytime it's been scheduled to avoid conflict with the town, those can be placed. And then the pulling the cable through will leave day. So it really could, you know, be worked out with the town.
We really want to minimize the disruption to the extent we can.
Sure, and I figured that, I just didn't know what kind of time you guys were.
Sir?
Without getting into the numbers, I'm just curious, who is paying for the cost of the construction, the modifications, and any chain maintenance to this where it connects to existing utility companies or whatever it's connected to? And who owns that solar field that this is being? The solar field is going to be coming through Phillipsburg, but who owns that? Who's going to, who maintains that? Who's getting the benefit of that?
Pohakon Solar Farm owns the solar field, the solar accelerator, that's who I'm here representing.
So it's a private company? Now, is that private company going to contribute to these costs? Like when this goes into the power line at the end, something's probably going to have to be modified. It's just making a hole in the wall, but that's going to be done by this private company?
Yeah, they should pay for it.
Okay, and also for any maintenance reasonably foreseeable down the road. So again, not getting into the numbers or anything like that. Now, is there any way that that's going to be set up in some sort of a high to if power goes out in town? That somehow, or the, not the homeowners, but at least the town can do something to maintain their lights or something? Now, there's one, it's down, it's down, so that's not going to supplement the existing grid.
This is a grid scale solar project, so it feeds the grid essentially. If the power were to go out, it's generally a transition issue. This plant would be cut off. So it would no longer generate.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Is there any further questions? Sir?
Julie, my name is Jay Fox, I'm owner of block 94, lot 202. I guess first of all, to clear up any misunderstandings, I've been in, I've been trying to be in communication with the group for, I don't know, pretty much most of the summer. And the last communication I had, I spoke to a gentleman named Mark Allen, and he had called me and represented basically that, you know, pretty much he was saying my site didn't work because I had a deed restriction of some sort, which I said, I'm not aware of it. Only that I, when I literally purchased the property, I gave, or bank account it was, I gave them five years to come back with condemnation. Other than that, there's no good restriction. And what I've done, I asked him to send me a copy of that report, title of the report for the, you know, the property search. I never received it. I went ahead on my own, I ordered a title search from PLS Title and Settlement Services. And I believe maybe Mark, I think maybe somebody misread. That's my thing, if you want to look at this. Lot 2.02 is not included in this. And if that would be the restriction you're talking about this, because I've been told by the title company in my county that there's no deed restrictions.
I don't see it here, but I know I did review title work where there was clear restriction for agricultural use.
So if we could just give the concerns for the record, and then the gentleman would be able to negotiate or speak out?
Well, I had no idea. It'd be certainly a surprise to me, when my title company tells me, no, you're right, no restriction.
Okay.
So I've gone record for that. As far as the project, first of all, I'm a private property owner. And I guess I've been informed tonight that there's going to be some other private easements that are going to be obtained, which, you know, some other private property owners, right, Mark?
Ah, yeah, that's my understanding.
And you're still going to have to run down the Bridge Commission's property?
No, I think we're avoiding the bridge commission.
Okay. I've been resident for Pohakon Township, sixty some odd years. And I was on RACs, I was the chairman of environmental or economic committee when I was chairman. And so Pohakon does not run anymore parks. They have less children today than they had when I was in school, or maybe not when I was, but for the years. And they have a big problem in retaining parks. I've been a father of RACs, so I know. As far as the property that they're speaking of, where the park's going to be, I'm not sure, but that might be an area that gets wet. When it rains, a lot of water sits there. So to use that for a park, doesn't make sense to me. As far as, as far as the going across my property, now you don't have to have an intermunicipal agreement where you're using, you're working on a project that has approval on Pohakon Township, has to go through Phillipsburg. Now there's an intermunicipal sort of agreement, but you don't cross mine. There's no concerns for any kids wanting to go across the street to the park, if it could ever be built. I would question whether Pohakon Township is even going to have any interest in, you know, in having a park in another park there. And I believe, I'm not sure, but you can, you can research this. I believe that the land that's just south of the soccer field in Phillipsburg, I believe that's owned, somebody told me, 'cause I looked at it at times, that the property's built owned by Pohakon and Phillipsburg, that's it. I don't know. Doesn't make sense to me.
Back in the, back in the early 90s, it was proposed, matter of fact, it was owned by Harton.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was owned by Harton. And we got that, and we build a tree farm there. We had to use it for agricultural or something with agriculture, so we decided to build a tree farm, which met their criteria.
Right.
And that's the way it's been all those times.
Right, because I love my.
We pay taxes on that, on Pohakon.
Okay, because I wouldn't shorten.
Yeah.
Somebody told me that one time.
Yeah, I can remember that.
Didn't have it, even do it needless. So if you look at that, I guess it's a specialty in title.
Yeah, well, you know, take a closer look.
Yeah, but I still couldn't, Adelstein couldn't beat it. But I said, one is going down.
One of the things we're going to have to show to Green Acres is satisfaction, is that there's no reasonable or practical alternative. So if it turns out that, you know, maybe we misread the title report or something, because Green Acres, we have a court reporter here who's going to produce a transcript, and we have to submit a transcript of this hearing to Green Acres so they can see what kind of questions were asked and whatnot. So clearly, you know, Green Acres is going to take a close look at it, at your property to see whether we can use it. I mean, other than the deed restriction that we, that we believe is there, maybe not. But there's also, I understand, I'm sure, I also understand there's significant engineering challenges with, with running the line for your property, and then we still have to deal with the Rivers Commission, Route 78, and they, they're not really amenable thus far. They haven't welcomed.
I would, I would really think, I would question that because, and I've done purpose oil test there, we were 10 feet clean, all right?
Yeah, so we'll take another look.
And where you're running that, you know, I know that road pretty well, I've been back and forth there a million times. And to use that farm, I actually used to own personal hill in Phillipsburg, my predecessor was way down that road, all right, before there was half. But it's a long story. Sure, I think that's going to be less environmental practice.
We can only put on the record the issues with the scope of hearing, and then you're more than welcome to speak with Mr. Peck after.
Oh, yeah, yeah, because I just sort of wanted to let them know.
No, I understand.
Yeah, we'll, we'll certainly take another look at your property. And I mean, we've looked at it very closely. We would much prefer to avoid the whole Green Acres process, which is a colossal thing than that, so, but we'll take another look.
Yeah, I think maybe also mine's probably less environmental impact, shorter round, and straight across the street, from what I see. I mean, honestly, I was never noticed on the, on the solar farm that began with, but it was a state approval or whatever.
So is there anyone, anyone else with any questions? Mr. Fox, have you ever finished?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Is there anyone else? Okay, there being none, I need a.
Well, I just wanted to, you wrapping up, I probably interrupted, but just again, to remind the public, you can still submit comments for another 15 days, but they have to be in writing to the town clerk and also the DEP. And I just wanted to thank the public for your courtesy and your, your good questions tonight. Sometimes, you know, you get tar and feather in these, in these hearings, but this was, this was very, very good, and I appreciate the council's support. Thank you.
You're welcome, Mr. Peck. May I make a motion to close the public portion of the group?
Second.
Roll call vote.
Councilman Lutz?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Council Vice President D. Trump?
Yes.
Councilman McVeigh?
Yes.
Council President Hope.
Yes, public portion is now closed. Moving forward.
We're going to have council's call.
Oh, would you like, do you want to?
I assume that.
I thought we were going to do it the next hearing.
Oh, is that, are we doing that next time? Okay, I'm sorry.
Is that okay?
No, it's fine. I just, I misunderstood.
Oh, no, that's okay. All right, Councilman McVeigh?
Council President. I make a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting.
I'll second that.
Motion to adjourn, second on the floor. Roll call vote.
Councilman Lutz?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Abstain.
Council Vice President D. Trump?
Yes.
Councilman McVeigh?
Yes.
Council President Hope.
Yes, meetings adjourned.